Good evening, the council meeting of September 17th will come to order. If you would please turn off our silence, all electronic devices and stand to honor God and country. Lord God, guide our proceedings in this business meeting of the city. May love of community and of others drive our actions. May discernment be exercised and encouraging words be spoken. If no one else says it, I will. I love you, Lord. I pray our city is revived for your glory and for our good. We are a city in desperate need of you. Amen. Hand to heart, let us pledge our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Persons wishing to be heard on items not on the agenda, there are forms available in the back of the room that may be turned into the clerk to your right. And if Ethan Morris would please come forward. Good evening, Nathan.
Good evening.
The city of Temple Terrace is pleased to present you with a certificate of recognition in recognition of earning the rank of Eagle Scout, which is the highest advancement in boy scouting. Ethan recently earned Eagle Scout rank through the Greater Tampa Bay Area Council of America and is a member of Boy Scout Troop 120. Ethan's Eagle Scout Community Service Project involved building a fenced-in area to train dogs for the Franklin's Boys Preparatory Academy in Tampa for Southeast Guide Dogs. He asked for donations from businesses as well as family and friends and purchased the supplies to build the fence. Ethan raised $658 to complete this project. It took two days to complete the project with other scouts and volunteers which Ethan supervised. This was an honorable and a dedicated endeavor. Ethan has demonstrated the core values of scouting and set a great example for his peers. We honor and salute Ethan for the attainment of such a prestigious goal as Eagle Scout. Congratulations, Ethan.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to introduce your family and friends who are with you this evening?
Yes, I have my mom and my dad and my uncle and my two grandparents. And I would just like to thank them most of all through supporting me through my journey. It's taken six years to be here and they've just been with me like side by side through all of it, so I thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few words, Ethan?
I mean, it was really funny actually because I found out about this project, I had another Eagle Scout ceremony of one of my friends. And it was really interesting because I have love for dogs, I have since I was a little kid. And I just think that it's a well-needed area because guide dogs are a necessity for many people and especially the dogs that they're going to be going to are people with PTSD. And so they're gonna be with veterans and two of my grandparents were veterans and so I have a big respect for that. And I just think it's a great program to be a part of and to be able to train those guide dogs for those people.
Wonderful. And I'm gonna come down to present your certificate, but just a moment of privilege, I've had the pleasure. And Mom, you don't get to embarrass him tonight, I get to embarrass him. I have, I have watched Ethan since he was a four-year-old and what a fine, fine young man you've grown into. And I will look at Mom and Dad and say, "Well done, good and faithful servants, well done."
Thank you.
I didn't want to photobomb the mayor.
Next, if Laura Taylor, Development Director for WMNF, would approach the podium. Since 1979, WMNF has been steadfast in offering the best in eclectic music, non-mainstream news, views, and public affairs programming to its dedicated listeners. The organization's call letters, which stand for Member Sponsored Non-Commercial FM, is a testament to its founding as a critically acclaimed, not-for-profit, member-sponsored, listener-supported radio station. Throughout its 40 years, the nonprofit has embraced diversity, freedom of expression, and tolerance of the opinions of others through its shows and events. As Florida's first community radio station, WMNF promotes the creative, cultural, and political vitality of the community. It is no doubt that it will continue to foster a positive relationship with its audience who embrace and appreciate its music, art, and cultural programming. WMNF has continuously supported the Temple Terrace Craft Brew Fest, Temple Terrace Arts Festival, and Cyclovia through on-air promotions. In recognition of your support to the Temple Terrace community during the past 40 years of community-conscious radio awarded the 17th Day of September 2019, we are delighted to honor you this evening. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. A few indeed. Hi, again, I am WMNF's Development Director Laura Taylor, and I've been with the station for 13 years and proud to be part of our 40th year celebration. With me, and if you'd like to join me, Justin Garcia is our WMNF Development Assistant and Social Media Manager, but he's taking video, so he might be busy right now. But I'm also proud to have WMNF Development Committee Volunteer Susan Sampson, and also a resident of Temple Terrace, as am I. Would you like to come with me? Great. And I want to speak on behalf of the hundreds of volunteers as well as board and staff who are proud to be recognized by the city of Temple Terrace. In fact, so many of our volunteers and donors live right here, and many of them received a knock on the door in the late 1970s. Station co-founders like our news director, Rob Lorai, and Friday Morning Host Cameron Dilly pounded the pavement asking citizens to fund an experiment, a community radio station in the Tampa Bay area whose voice was independent from corporate media. Most wrote checks, and in 1979, we went on the air in an old house in Hyde Park. We used the second floor and the bathtub was the record library. We began as a success. Community support grew and grew because of the music presented nowhere else and community local news where listeners heard their neighbors and their causes on the air. Much has changed since 1979, including the 10,000-square-foot station built by individual donors and local businesses in 2005. In fact, we just paid off our mortgage, so we're having another good 40th year. But what you get on the air remains for many their radio home, and it's all because of community support. Temple Terrace has that community feel, a small town like the small station that we are, with lots of love and passion for those who live and work here, and with homes, offices, and car radios set to 88.5 FM. In a cookie-cutter, big-box world of corporate media and autotune singing voices, people are looking for uniqueness and authenticity and starve for independence. Our eclectic music programming has fostered a thriving local music scene, inspiring generations of musicians that supported hundreds of local businesses. So we are privileged to receive this honor and thank you very much.
would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Are there any corrections? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you, minutes stand approved. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda, a three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. As speakers come to the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. During public items on, comment on items that are not on the agenda, the city manager and directors in the audience do make note of those items related to city business. Is there anyone that wish to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? I do have some forms, but they are all agenda-related. Thank you, seen, none, we will move forward. First, item 8A, a resolution approving 3% adjustment to water, irrigation, and wastewater service rates. Troy Tinch, Public Works Director of Utilities, will explain. Mr. Tinch.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Evening.
City Council. Do we have a new microphone? Okay, sorry. So I'm here this evening to discuss the proposed water and sewer increases for fiscal year 20. And really, my goal this evening is to give you some background information as to why we feel these rates are warranted during this fiscal cycle. So if I could go ahead and get the, thank you. So let's start off talking about the condition of our assets. So as far as the water is concerned, the water treatment plant at White Way was constructed in 1967. It did see an upgrade, a fairly significant upgrade in 1995 when they installed the 1 million gallon containment system, containment system, the tankout in that area. And other than that, though, other than general maintenance to keep the system moving forward, there's not been any real substantial work done onsite. We do anticipate as we move forward that we will want to upgrade some of the systems out there to kind of bring them up to date, some of the computer systems, animation at the site to help with, kind of bring us back into the times. In addition, as most of you know, we have an additional water treatment facility there on Sunnydale. That facility was constructed in 1992. And again, other than just general annual maintenance on that site, we don't, there's, that site is not seeing any significant upgrades since that time period. So you're looking at a plant that's going on 18 years old, soon to be 20. We are proposing to replace one of the chlorine scrubbers onsite. So that's about $250,000 that we have budgeted this fiscal cycle that's coming up for that effort. So that kind of, kind of gives you an idea of what we're looking at. So we're looking to make these improvements, they're not small dollar amounts, not tens of thousands, they're hundreds of thousands, if not sometimes into the millions. So again, to keep up with that effort, we really need to have a rate that allows us to continue to bring these things forward, to keep all this moving forward, to keep everything up to date. And finally, our distribution system for water. As you know, we're a relatively old city, we've been around since 1925. Now, I'm not telling you that the water, that there are pipes in the ground from 1925, but we have some water lines that are probably in the 40 to 50, even 60-year range. So we need to continue to improve those, replace those. Matter of fact, St. Augustine, a project that we somewhat recently approved, is Phase One of a multi-phase project to upsize some of those water lines so that we can keep good pressure for life safety as well as provide services to our customers. We will have that continuation of multiple years, phases for that project. In addition, we have multiple phases for other water line replacement projects in our five-year plan. And again, these projects are not in the tens of thousands, we're talking about hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars over the next three to five years. So it's important that, again, we have this funding available to continue to work these projects in and keep a healthy fund balance. So as far as our sewer system, as you know, we're currently in Phase One of the condition assessment or the master plan. So we're out there collecting data now, we're looking at all of our lift stations, we're looking at all of our force mains, getting a condition assessment of those systems to help build a five, 10, 20-year plan for replacement. And speaking of those lift stations, I know we've had several recently that we brought forward for design. We'll be moving into construction on a couple of those projects this year. These projects, again, they're in the hundreds of thousands of dollar range. And as we start to really dip into that, to keep those systems moving forward, to keep that replacement process moving, we're starting to kind of dip down into our fund balance, so we're seeing that start to shrink. And so the idea of this increase is to kind of help push that back up where it needs to be in a really safe range. But speaking of lift stations, most of our stations, about three-quarters of them are at or near their design lifespan. So we know that over the next five to 10 years, we're going to need to replace one, one and a half, or even two stations per year. So we need to make sure that we have the funds available to do so. In addition, we know we have a significant section of our gravity system that is experiencing inflow and infiltration at INI. I believe I spoke to you about that previously, that's where that old vitrified clay pipe, it's cracking, groundwater flowing in, we have to pay to treat that groundwater. So we're lining these, these old pipes, these old sewer lines, sewer mains, and we're lining the old sewer manholes to ensure we are not getting that INI into the system. So it's a cost savings in the long run, but in the short term, it's still hundreds of thousands of dollars a year to keep these projects going and keep these lining projects moving forward. So are we the only community in Hillsborough County that is experiencing rate increases? No. Plant City, they've had an ordinance in place since 1998 that allows them to increase, according to GDP, this year they're gonna increase their rates by a little over 1%. Now, you think about over this past 20-plus years that they've had this in place, I would think annually they're increasing that to kind of keep up with that average cost of, or increased cost of doing business over time. So the city of Tampa, I think there's been a lot of discussion about the city of Tampa as of late. I've seen multiple articles in the newspapers regarding their proposed rate increases. They're looking to increase their rates by 100% over the next eight years. Now, I want to speak a little further about that in just a moment. And then finally, Hillsborough County, this year they've already increased their rates by 1.4%. So it's not that, it's a situation where they're doing it, we should do it also. It's a, it's evidence that it's costing us more money every year to continue to do the work we're doing now. So speaking of the cost of doing business, as I mentioned, the city of Tampa is looking to increase their rates over the next eight years. So what does that mean for the city of Tampa? Well, that means that our rate is going to increase. As I'm sure you're all aware, we send all of our wastewater down the line to the Howard F. Kern Wastewater Treatment Plant, and that's, that plant itself is slated for millions of dollars of upgrades. So they're gonna pass that on to us as a customer. I've spoken with the individual with the city of Tampa, and they have indicated that we will be seeing a rate increase likely in January of this year, of the upcoming year. So again, more reason why we need to make sure that we have funds available to meet the needs of both pumping that water on down the line and paying for that treatment process. In addition, the city of Temple Terrace, our last rate increase was in fiscal year 17. So in the past three years, we haven't proposed a rate increase. So what is the CPI, what is the Consumer Price Index been doing over that last three years? Well, it's been increasing at about 3.3% per year. So it's costing about 10% more for us to do business today than it did three years ago, which is yet another reason why we're proposing this increase, to try and kind of mimic what that CPI curve is doing. And we've created a graph here to really provide an example of what we're seeing with CPI versus where we are as a city. So the blue line represents the CPI over the last 10 years, and it, it grows incrementally each year. So the long and the short of it is, since 2010 till now, it's about 47% more to do business than it was 10 years ago. Well, the city of Temple Terrace, we've had some increases, but as you can see, we're kind of separating from that CPI. And so we're seeing ourselves in around the 21% range increase over that same time period. So we're getting behind the curve. Now, we've built a little bit of a fund balance, and there's been some discussion about it being healthy, but as I indicated, we're really starting to dip heavily into that fund balance. And I think we're gonna see that fund balance really start to waver over time if we don't do something now to kind of bolster that. So what does this mean? What does this increase mean to the average customer? So we, we determined the average customer is about 6,000 gallons per month, and the increase would be a little over $2.50 per month increase. Not a tremendous amount of money, but it is still an increase nonetheless. And whenever you take that increase across the board, times 12 months, it does help give us that little bit of extra money that we're going to need to continue to operate, to continue to operate our system. In addition, I've had some discussions with our folks in finance, and as, as I've discussed earlier, our five-year CIP, if we continue at this rate of, of which we really need to do because a lot of our system is aging and things need to be replaced, things need to be rehabbed, that within the next three years, we'll see our fund balance dip to dangerous levels. And by dangerous levels, I mean somewhere below $100,000. So to me, that is a great concern. And trust me when I say, and I think you all believe me, that we're not spending money just to spend money, we're spending money because we have to, because the system demands it, and because it's not been done. So we need to continue to do so. So having said all that, staff firmly believes that these increases are warranted and needed. I think it's something that we need to start evaluating on an annual basis. And we recommend that this, because of everything I've talked about, that this be passed. And at this point, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tinch. Prior to council posing questions to you, we do have some members of the public that would like to address this issue.
Good evening, Annette Rennie, 9512 Woodland Ridge Drive. My problem with this whole thing is the lack of transparency. We went through land disposal, and that wasn't transparent. We had the gas tax, and you know what happened there. Why wasn't this discussed during the budget? Why are we finding this out now when we're ready to solidify the budget? It is wrong, it is not fair to the taxpayers, and I want council to really consider not doing this this year. It should be worked into the budget next year and not this year. We still have the highest taxes, and my last five sales, the people moved out of the city, whether they were retiring or moving up as young people into different homes, they moved away. Guess why? Look around, look at what's happening. I'm asking you to please not go forward with this or Item B. It's just not needed this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. David Pogorlic, 1534 North River Hills Drive. I have to say that this increase comes as quite a surprise to myself as well. I admit, I haven't been following as closely as maybe I should, the budget process, but as I recall, this came up in the very first budget meeting back in, was it June? And at that time, my personal take, anecdotally, was that nobody up here on the dais was interested in raising the rates. And then it disappeared. And then all of a sudden, we get a notice in our water bill that it's up for a final vote without, apparently without any discussion during the whole budget process with, with y'all. I think probably some of you were probably surprised as well. So that's the big thing I have with that. The other thing is, you know, they talked about the fund dipping, and I think you all know that those two funds historically have had very large surpluses in them, millions of dollars of surplus. And until tonight, I haven't seen, and maybe you haven't seen either, any justification to increase those rates. And you know, you can say, "Well, it's only 3%, it's only $5", but it comes out of the same pocket, my pocket and the citizen's pocket, as all the other taxes. And I think you all heard about the recent events with the OPEC. Gas is supposed to go up 20%. That comes out of our pocket too. So you know, just, just, I just wish people would stop putting their hands in my pocket, okay? That's really what this is all about. So you know, it's the, again, it comes as a surprise. The ordinance says you may raise the rate in accordance with the CPI, doesn't say you must. And just because you may doesn't mean you should. So I would like you to consider that as well. I don't think there's a need for an increase. I think with the fund balance, as I recall, is, is healthy. I appreciate the presentation that was made tonight, he made some good points, but again, last minute, you know, where was this during the whole discussion of the budget prior? Maybe, maybe he talked about it and I didn't see it, but I, again, I didn't see it. If you look around, you can see there's a lot of empty seats. Unfortunately, the people that are gonna be most impacted by that, they probably can't make it here because they're working two and three jobs already to pay for the taxes they have to pay, or they don't have the gas money to get here to talk to you guys tonight. So again, I think that this came as a surprise. It makes me wonder what other surprises might be in the budget that maybe we could do without, that kind of got snuck in. And I would ask you to please consider not voting, not in favor of this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pogorlic. I'd ask if there are any other members of the public that would like to address this
Good evening. Sorry, I didn't get to sign up, but just wanted to, to put a little input in. Ellen Snelling, 521 Lantern Circle. And just to mention, as the other two speakers, that we do have the highest millage rate in the whole area, I just looked again tonight, but Tampa and Plant City's millage rate for property taxes is lower than ours. And the reason I bring that up is that we already are taxed at a high rate, and some citizens, again, that can't be here tonight, that may be affected more than I would be, are already paying their fair share of taxes in general to live here. And these taxes and these rates affect businesses as well, not just residents. And we really want to make Temple Terrace friendly to both businesses and residents. We don't want them hearing like, "Oh, you know, something else is being raised" when we already have such high rates, especially for our property taxes. And as far as, you know, possibly, this was a surprise to me, I saw it in my water bill, that's how I found out. And I was thinking that perhaps it could be discussed more over the next year and readdressed the following year, but I just don't see a need for this, even though the projects that were brought up were obviously, need to be done at some point. If we already have a healthy balance this year, why raise it? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council on this item? Council questions, Mr. Tinch.
I have a question.
Councilman Donahue.
So we've been hearing about the problems of some of our sister cities, and that the governor is really coming down hard on these cities who did not maintain their infrastructure, and obviously they had some serious water issues.
Correct.
And sewage issues. Are, I mean, or should we not, I mean, isn't that the whole point of doing this now, is raising this money to fix these problems before we get fined for dealing?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. Which, what we want to do is, we want to stay out ahead of the curve. And right now, we're probably on the curve. And I think we're doing, the department is doing what we need to get caught up, you know, as you're all aware, I've brought forward many projects, design projects and construction projects, and those will need to continue because of the state of our system. We unfortunately went several years where we didn't do a lot. Now, the recession was partially blamed for that, but there was also a lack of guidance for a while within the department. So we really need to get back on track. And, and I understand, I too live in the city, and I, I would feel the crunch of an additional 3%, but knowing the state of our system, knowing the condition, I think it's warranted.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilman Chambers.
Does somebody know how many total dollars this 3% will generate in a year?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Can somebody share that?
Yes, we will.
Ms. Boswell.
Ms. Boswell, Finance Director, good evening. The 3% would garner $360,465.
Other questions?
I had, I had just one, Mr. Tinch. As you talked about installing larger piping for more pressure, I think several people in the room, I know I live in one of the older homes in Temple Terrace, as you have bigger pipes with more pressure pushing into our old pipes, what kind of negative impact can that have on homeowners that have some of the older piping, smaller pipes, as you have a bigger pipe? I'm just trying to think the physics in my brain are, it can be quite negative for the, in addition to the 3%, I'm thinking if you blow out my pipes, the 3% will not be my biggest concern.
I understand your concerns. And I misspoke a bit. Basically, what that does is allow us for more volume. It's not necessarily gonna increase the pressure, the pressure is still what it The pressure is still what it will be, around 65 PSI for the six-inch versus the four. It's the volume that you can get out of the six-inch pipe in the event that we had a fire and the fire station had to tie into one of our hydrants. The difference between a four-inch pipe and a six-inch pipe is about three times as much volume. So it's a volumetric, not a pressure. So my apologies on that, but a good catch. And that's an excellent question.
Other questions? Councilman Chisholm.
Thank you. I don't have a question. I just have some statements to make. I'm not in support of the proposal. I'm disappointed on how it's been brought forward. We spoke about the budget for the last two months.
Yes.
And this was touched on very slightly. Well, there might be a little increase, period. Now, if we were going to impose a 3% or a 4% or whatever you want to impose, not you, but just speaking in general, that should have been talked about the budget process because maybe we would have tweaked the millage rate a little differently. The city took in over $800,000 this year, above and beyond what it took last year, and we spent all of it. We gobbled it up like it was nothing. We sat in this very room, and I said I would call him out when we had a shortfall and said, we don't have money for the reserves. And one of the folks from the finance said, oh, we can pull it out from the sanitation fund. I said, when you come back to me in two months or three months and ask for that 3% increase, I'm going to look at you in the eyeballs and say, hey, what happened? So guess what? What happened? Because now we're looking at it. I don't want to use a strong word, so I'm going to be softer. I'm not comfortable. I'm not comfortable with this. I'm not comfortable with the budget. What else in the budget was not fully explained and disclosed? You know, I'm looking at the CPI on Bureau of Labor Statistics as you're sitting here talking. The all items was 1.7% increase, and energy declined 4.4%. You know, I'm not saying, I've served on this council and represented the city for many, many years, and this tactic of this ordinance that was passed to automatically raise these rates every year was one of Jerry Seber's, you know, ideas. Before that, the city ran fine. Where there's a problem, we talk about it, and we tweak the rate a little bit, whatever it may be. And we have a town hall meeting, we talk about it, or we have a council discussion, talk about it. But we were in this room on August 20th, talked about the budget, went back and forth. It can work. It's great. No problem. On August 23rd, three days later, I get an email from staff saying rates are going to 3%. That's not good. Don't you think we should have maybe disclosed that very clearly during that budget process? Because my outcome of the budget process, I'm not going to support this, I'm not going to support the budget. I'm just not comfortable with it now. That, it's not the way I work. I like to have everything disclosed in front of me. Let's talk about it. I don't want to piecemeal this thing. Okay, we've got, we agreed on this, now we'll present this after the fact. Three days later is not, although it was put in there and might have been mentioned once, but nothing in detail, because it's been mentioned before, and last year and the year before, it wasn't imposed. But it's the burdens on this council or the citizens to say, we need it or we don't need it. Where for the last 75, 80 years, whenever there was a shortfall, we would address it. No. I'm not going to deny the fact that there may be some need for renovations. I agree with you. But I think that should have been discussed in a different arena during the budget discussions. You know, and this is not towards you, I'm just talking in general. You're doing a great job. But, you know, there's been a lot of capital improvements and things that need to be done. But I think that should be discussed. We're looking at the annual city budget, because maybe there are certain projects that we would have cut out and said, now let's take care of this. You know, and when we look at just different areas, I don't want to go through the budget all over again, but, you know, we started looking at the budget, there's charges in there this year that weren't in there last year. And if we were going to be discussing 3%, I, for one, would have done a heck of a lot more questioning in certain areas where there was a charge for reserve this year, but there wasn't last year, where that changed the number of the expenditures. So there's, you know, I'm just not comfortable. I'm not, and I've done this a long time, so, but never has it been presented in a way it's been presented where three days after this council, sort of tend to have said, okay, we're good with the budget. And then three days later, this pops up. That's where my heart burns at, or I'm just, I don't think it's, I'm providing my constituents justice by not having a very open dialogue discussion when all the cards are on the table. Don't want to go to one that the staff's already picked up, say, oh, I don't want to do that. So that's where I'm at with it. I'm just not comfortable with it. I'm not going to support, I'm not going to support the budget either if this passes. Because I'm just not, I don't like the way it's been presented. I don't like the way it's coming forward. And yes, there is an ordinance, but prior to this ordinance being passed during the Jerry Seber era, this didn't exist. One time, they said, there's, you know, our sanitation is always running in the black, the commercial has at least. Residential's always been sort of in the red. Years ago, we talked about outsourcing it. People came in here with porch foot, with...
Pitchforks.
Pitchforks.
Pitchforks. And, I mean, they were fired up. And then at the end, they said, you know, well, let's just raise the rate a little bit and keep our garbage service. But there was some in-depth discussion with that. And I'm good with that. Let's talk about it. But doing it like this, I don't like it, because if you're going to increase this, then I have another 100 questions about the budget that things have popped up this year, then pop up last year. And, you know, I thought there was an agreement where we were good, but apparently, we're not good because now they're asking for another increase. And some of those repairs are warranted. I'm not saying they're not. I'm just, that discussion should have been made a few weeks or a few months before when we were in the middle of saying, this is the expansion for the year, guys. What do you want to do? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Chisholm. Other questions, council?
Council, I would ask, what is your pleasure and would entertain a motion with regards to the water irrigation and wastewater proposal rates that we have just heard?
I move to approve the recommendation of staff to increase by 3% water irrigation and wastewater service rates.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Thank you. Next item, a resolution approving a 3% adjustment to solid waste rates for residential and commercial services. Public Works Director of Operations and Maintenance, Ray LeBlanc, will explain. Mr. LeBlanc.
Good evening. Ray LeBlanc, Public Works Director of Operations. I'm here to make a recommendation that the city's disposal, the solid waste rates and recyclables are increased by the amount of 3% for fiscal year 2019, 2020. The US CPI series currently reflects an average annual growth of 3.6%. After review of the city's customers' rates or fees and disposal, city staff and myself recommend a rate increase of 3% for next fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. And following public comment, we will call you back for any questions council may have.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and Council. David Pogorilic, 1534 North River Hills Drive. Can I just say ditto? It's the same thing. It's a big surprise. I think you've, you know, Mr. Chisholm said it, that it's a surprise to him as well, that that particular fund has always ran in the black, as far as I'm aware of. And there's been no justification for the increase. So without justification, and because, like you said, it just popped up in the most recent budget document and wasn't in the prior ones, I would sincerely ask that you not approve this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pogorilic. I'd ask if there are any other members of the public that would like to comment on
Annette Rennie, 9512 Woodland Ridge Drive. I'm going to say ditto, too. It's the same exact thing. Wasn't discussed at length in the budget. We weren't expecting it. It's at the end of the budget, and it's not necessary. Look at the, look at the people. Look at the residents. Listen to them. Let them know in advance. Don't just spring it on us. Wrong. Please, don't vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rennie. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address council on this
You'll have to excuse me, I've lost my voice a little bit. Meredith Abel, 6103 Liberty Avenue. With both of these increases, I'm not sure why they weren't presented at an earlier time, but I don't know why people don't feel like they should pay for these services. Like, water's not free, and it's definitely something that's in need, as well as public works. I mean, we definitely need things done in our city. And I think that, I think that the rate increase is important, otherwise, they wouldn't be asking for it. And hopefully, they can come forward at an appropriate time in the future when everyone will feel as though it is a appropriate time. I'm not really sure when that timeline is, but that's all I have to say. Ellen Snelling, 521 Lantern Circle. I just wanted to add that, you know, the first presentation about the water rate increase, we actually had a presentation of several projects. In the second one, there really wasn't even a presentation of what it would be used for. But again, with both of these, I think if we're already in the black and there's enough reserve right now, and the fact that it was presented sort of after the budget was actually gone through in detail, then I would agree with some of the other speakers that it would be better to consider it for next year, when we have a lot more time to examine it and look into each project and decide if that rate increase is needed. And we all are paying these rates now, and they have been increased over time. So it's not like we're not paying for the services, which I have to, you know, let everybody know, I really appreciate all our services here in Temple Terrace, that it is an amazing city, and I appreciate our sanitation workers very much, but I just don't think a rate is needed at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snelling. Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Seeing none, I would ask council, questions, comments? Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. LeBlanc, Mr. Tinch, I'm not going to support this, but I want you to know why, and I want you to know how you may get my support on some of this in the future. I don't want to just say no.
There's a piece I'd like to add to this, and I don't mean to interrupt you, that I didn't know about till about a day ago, okay? Hillsborough County, we're required to bring our solid waste there. We have an interlocal agreement. If they have a proposed rate increase, which they have in the past, they notify us in late June. They notified me yesterday. What does that mean? Across the four programs, well, for solid waste, it means about $60,000 a year in increased fees. I've asked four times since yesterday from the director, and I was told at 9:30 yesterday, you should have received a letter in late June. I didn't get it. In 2017, in June, we got a letter saying the proposed increase is 33 cents a ton. What did that mean? That meant $6,275 a year. I talked to Charles. We sucked it up in the programs. Our rates didn't change. This is $3.21. So when you put the two together, we're about $65,000, $66,000 a year more than we were in 2017. I'm just as angry as anybody about a rate increase from them. And right here, you should have received the letter. I've reached out four times in 24 hours to show me the letter, so I haven't gotten it. We're going to get the increase. We, Charles may try to make a concession with somebody there to do something. So anyway, what that, and I don't mean to interrupt you, Andy, but that puts collectively about $65,000, $66,000 on top of the program since 2018 October, starting this October. So that's, I think everybody should know that before they go there. I'll answer any questions I can.
Okay. Thank you for that. It's good information. Appreciate that.
Yeah, and I just, 9:30 yesterday morning.
Okay. But here's where I am on this, just so you know. When we first met in July, we were sitting down there for our first budget meeting, and there was talk brought up at that meeting about there was a potential to want to raise these 3%. And we had some discussion on that at our first meeting, but overall, it did not go over well. It was, everybody was, at the very least, we were skeptical, we had questions, everybody was kind of cool to the idea. Everybody was like, oh, you know, you're going to have to show us some need to do this. But there was no decision made. We didn't say yes or no. We all kind of generally said, we need more information. And that was the last time, over all of our budget meetings, that that was ever brought Maybe this is somewhat on me for not asking, but I kind of, wrongfully it turned out, assumed that because it was never brought up again, that the reception of the council was that it was just dropped. The idea was dropped. I never, it was never brought up again, and every time we had a meeting, which, we get a new book every time we have a meeting, which makes it very difficult to know what's in the new book, because you've got to go through another book every time we have a meeting. And I missed it. I didn't catch the fact that this was in here, and this was not contained in any of the executive summaries on the front page of the new books either. So there was no attention drawn to the fact that this 3% proposal was in there. We didn't know it. I don't think anybody knew it until three days after our last budget meeting. Here's what, and I came in here not knowing whether I'm in favor of this or not, because I don't feel like I've been given enough information. If you need this money in the future, next year or sometime before next year, if these tipping fees have gone up at the last minute, which I understand you didn't find out about yesterday, but this wasn't put on the agenda yesterday, Ray. This was put on the agenda a long time ago.
Well, I get that. I get that. We've never been, this is...
Well, wait, let me finish, because I'll forget where I was. So what I would expect to see, if you want me to vote in favor of raising taxes or fees or membership, whatever it is, I'm not necessarily against it. If you talk to me about decaying pipe and treatment plants and tipping fees going up, I mean, I think we can all understand that, and I think our constituents can understand that. However, what I would like to see is, these are the projects that need to be done, right? These are, these are the things that have to be done to this treatment plant. These are the real fees that are, our fees are going up, our tipping fees are going up. This is what we bring in at our current rate, and this is how much money we're going to be short if we don't do something differently. Maybe we have to go up 1.7%. I'm making up numbers here, but I mean, maybe, this is just a math problem. This isn't, so, good presentation, Troy and Ray. Good job. I'm not upset with you guys. I'm just saying that if you want us to raise fees on our constituents, I have to be able to look these people in the eye and say, we had no choice, right? The tipping fees, we went up 66 grand. The water treatment plant needs a million dollars worth of renovation. The clay pipe's fallen in. And I can look people in the eye and justify that. But I can't look them in the eye and justify raising fees without that kind of information. So I'm sorry, I'm not in favor of it, and I wish that we had had some discussion during the budget process, because perhaps, if I'd have been given the opportunity, I could have told you guys this in July, and maybe you could have provided some information that would have opened everybody's eyes, and maybe we wouldn't have people here that are against it. Maybe everybody would say, well, I hate to see it go up, but I understand. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman Chisler.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Mr. Ross in this vein of logic. I think at the, maybe it wasn't the first budget meeting, but one of the early budget meetings, we all pretty much polled and said, we really had no appetite for any increases. It was too repressive on the public, businesses in particular. It's something that's very difficult to explain. I understand the numbers. I understand where the numbers are coming from. But also, made a promise to people a year ago, that I was going to hold back on increases and hold back on spending as much as we could. And I intend to live up to that promise. So I cannot support, while I do support the budget overall, I cannot support these increases. And we will have to do what needs to be done to accommodate that. Good presentations of both.
Thank you, Councilman Chisler. Councilman Chambers.
Okay, again, I have to ask my question. What's the total amount that would be generated by 3%?
Total amount?
Total dollars.
Or generated by 3%?
The total amount that would have been generated...
The total amount that would have been generated with a 3% increase in sanitation would have been 104,550.
Thank you. So I agree with Councilmember Ross and Chisler. I could support whatever percentage to get us to the 66,000, if that tipping fee does go up. I could support that.
Well, it did, the 6,000 in 2018. It's going to go up. I can narrow it down between 18,000 tons a year, $3.21 a ton increase. That's what it's going to cost us. It's not, if it's going to go up, it's going to go up. The county notification system, we'll have to work on that. I can tell you this, Charles is going to try to get him a letter to him, but we're going to get the increase. I've probably haven't seen the letter by now, but that's neither here nor there. I mean, let me just say that I had discussions with Charles and the Finance Director. The reason we had the increase was to fund the vehicle replacement program. We got out of the woods from 2015, whatever it was, 1513, whatever, and we're level now. So my interpretation of this is that, you know, I asked, they said, we can't fund a vehicle in this budget. We really need one. We can squeak by and we can improvise, but moving forward, just for your information, we're going to have to purchase another vehicle in the next budget cycle, or the tide's going to go back out to where it was three years and a month ago. And that's not going to make anybody happy. So how we get there, I don't really know. I collect the garbage, they collect the money. But we need to stay on track with the vehicle replacement program, so it doesn't cost us a lot of money in $7,500 a month for rentals and equipment. Those are things to keep in mind. I get what people feel about increases, but we're going to have to do something in the next budget cycle, because apparently we can't do it this budget cycle. And that's really all I have, except the increase. That's, that's never happened before, but we can't unring that bell.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Councilman Donahue.
Well, I think we've all heard loud and clear why and what we should have known before we came into tonight's meeting, and the fact that we didn't know is a shame, because, man, I hate like heck to tell both of these departments that you know the price is going up, and we're going to feel it soon. So if you look at this council, this is your council for next year as well. So my suggestion is, just start sending us the information as soon as you know it. As soon as you see that that rate increase goes into effect, let us know how much this is happening, as soon, because you're going to start getting the bills as you go to the, to use the service. And we're going to start paying the extra money for water. So I think if this group hasn't said loud, I mean, I would love to make a motion right now, but it would be pointless to recommend that we go with this 3%. So I'm not going to, because I think you have heard, most of you have heard, Mr. City Manager, I think you have heard, more is more, and that's what we need. We need it all the time, we need it as constant stream, and because we, each of us, I know, I mean, just think about it, you've just heard how much this is going to cost us, and your figure is pretty close to what we would have made. So we wouldn't have had a lot of extra, maybe, maybe enough to buy another truck. My point is, just blab, talk, 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 however you feel you need to do it. If you have to come to these meetings, or if we have to say, you have anything you want to tell us from the dais, then that's what we're going to have to do, because obviously communication is not there, or everyone has said, almost everyone, that they, that they would support this if we had known about it, okay? So thank you for being here. I'm sorry we had to say no, but you tried.
Councilman Schiller.
Thank you. Just, I think the fact of the matter is, the discussion should be had at the right time. If this would have been had a month or two ago, maybe the miller rate would have been different. You came to us last year and said, look, we're in bad shape, we need to get a truck, or two trucks. And what did we do? We budget accordingly. But to come after the fact and say, we need this 3%, after we sort of tentatively agreed, you know, it's going to be presented, what I expect is, say, here's our sanitation fund, because commercial sanitation is always red and black. I know we're talking about sanitation in general. Here's our revenues in sanitation, because it's in the black. And again, the city is a not-for-profit organization. So if it's in the black, how much is this additional tipping fee taking away from? So we sort of have those numbers to look at, because I don't think anybody's ever, when you came here and you asked for a garbage truck, I don't think anybody in this council said, no, so we need it, we know we need it, let's do it. It's got to be reasonable, and it's got to be at the right timing, and it's got to be planned, so while we're talking numbers, we're talking numbers. I don't think anything that you've said, or Troy said, has been inaccurate or incorrect, but it's got to be presented. Now, if this was six months later, and you're presenting this, okay, it's different information. It's a couple of weeks apart, so this all should have been done. You're saying the tipping fees, you know, just came up, but, you know, we had the 3% increase email, came to us on the 23rd. This morning, we got a graph saying, graphs have increased in enterprise fund. Shouldn't we have gotten that a few weeks ago? I mean, I don't know about you guys, but I worked here today, and I look at stuff, you know, when I can. So if I'm going to go analyze graphs, I don't want to analyze them an hour or two before a meeting, I want to look at it a day or two or a week ahead of time. I'm just saying, we have to present the information in a manner that gives us a fair opportunity to review and ask questions, and then I think we could all be on the same page. And I think everybody up here would cooperate with you and the departments, and living proof of that is, the city, the council is committed to revamping some of the well stations, the new garbage trucks, the recycle truck. I mean, you've done a lot, whereas before, the last five, six, seven years, not much of that's been done. But I think timing is important, such a close time that this should have been talked about, you know, back then. So obviously, I'm not going to support it, but I would suggest in the future, as Mr. Ross and others have indicated, you have to present us with, with numbers that, you know, say, commercial sanitation is making money, residential is losing money. This is what it's losing. And the 3% is going to give us this much money, 2% is going to give us this much, 1% is going to give us this much, so we know, and everybody's not scrambling, saying, what's this going to cost us? And everybody's, oh, it's a hundred and some thousand dollars. But your increase is only, this is the sanitation side, is only 60 some thousand. So all that has to make sense. One plus one has to equal two, and I think we certainly can work together. We want the city to, to move forward on, on sound ground. We don't want it to be walking backwards. But I think that the way things are presented and the timing is very important, at least to me, and it sounds like to some of the others. So thank you for your presentation, it certainly is very clear, but I won't support it for the reasons that have been discussed. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, counsel? Mr. Stevens.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Counsel, I guess, if I can, just take the opportunity to, I guess, apologize for the way that this was presented. I guess my office had made some assumptions that by getting no direction, I guess we were given direction, and that's a mistake on my part. We will do better. I can tell you this, that the funds, as they exist right now, and the budget that exists right now, we need to make some, some adjustments, obviously, to the revenue in these two funds, but it doesn't affect the overall budget all that much. That can be done fairly quickly. We've kind of already contemplated that, and had that discussion with the finance. As far as the presentation, again, I was always under the impression that everybody was under the same impression, that this was always built into the budget. Since we first started, we had the ordinances from 2015, and we just assumed that we could build those in. The capital improvement program, the five-year capital improvement program, I guess is one of those things that, if we're talking about anticipating an increase here in the future, I've certainly learned from that, that I need to spend a little bit more time on the capital improvement schedule and explaining that to counsel, pretty much upfront, rather than at the last stage. So I apologize for the presentation. I do think that our funds are in decent shape moving into 1920, with the budget that we're fixing to propose this evening. In 2021, we're going to have to, we'll have to take a look at what the capital schedule is, and set some priorities moving forward. But if we were to bring this back to you next year, we'll certainly do it in a different fashion, and not make assumptions on my part, and for that, I apologize. But I've heard what you've said, and we'll certainly make that adjustment here in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. It's your pleasure to entertain a motion with regards to the city's solid waste proposed rates for 2019 and 2020.
We have to keep them the way they are this year.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Item 8C, Public Hearing on Tentative Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Tax Levy and Budget. First reading of ordinance 1475, adopting the fiscal year 2019-2020 tax levy. The public hearing is now open, uninscriptible. Boswell will explain as possible.
Gooding Mayor, council members. In accordance with the applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes, the city council has scheduled tonight as the first of two public hearings on the property tax millage levy. The hearing is tonight, September 17, 2019, to solicit public comments on the proposed property tax millage. The second meeting will be on October 1, and this is to, for the adoption of the annual budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. The agenda has been structured to provide the council with the opportunity to comply with both city charter and Florida statutory requirements on the budget and tax levy. The council needs to convene a public hearing on the proposed property tax millage levy and make announcements at the public hearing prior to formal consideration of the attached ordinance, which we have done. The recommended property tax millage rate is 6.555 per 1,000 of assessed value. It is the same as the current fiscal year. The recommended property tax millage rate of 6.555 is .4488 mils, or 7.35% higher than the rolled-back rate of 6.1062. The council should take action to approve the attached ordinance approving the ad valorem tax rate for the upcoming fiscal year. The reasons for the increased 7.35% higher than the rollback rate is 556,000 in the general fund capital, and keeping the operation expenditures at a level that we can continue to operate at this millage rate. The council should take action to approve the attached ordinance approving the ad valorem tax rate for the upcoming fiscal year. If approved on first reading, the ordinance will be scheduled for second and final reading on October 1, 2019. And just to add, this has zero bearing whatsoever on the enterprise fund at all.
Thank you, Ms. Boswell. Are there members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? Counsel, questions? Seeing none, if the clerk would read title of ordinance 1475.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, adopting a millage rate of 6.555 mils for fiscal year 2019-2020, said millage rate being .4488 mils, or 7.35% more than the rollback rate of 6.1062 mils, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 1475 on first reading.
We have to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Discussion, Councilman Schiller.
Just for the record, I don't have a question on our discussion, but just for the record, the 6.55 mils is the same as the millage rate that was, there was, where we had it last year. Because Ms. Boswell got up, she did a very good job. There was a big mouthful when you say your rollback rate and increase, and so I just want to make it clear for the record that the millage rate being adopted this year, the same millage rate that was in place last year. Is that...
Yes. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Any other, Councilman Ross.
Yes, ma'am, I was going to say something during comment, too, along the same lines, is there's been some confusion in the community. I've heard people misunderstanding, believing that we're rolling, that we're increasing the millage rate, when in fact, we're not. But the confusion comes around, is people don't understand what the rollback rate is. The rollback rate, for those watching, is the rate that the city's millage rate would be hypothetically, if we were going to take in the same amount of money that we took in last year. But this, this is not an increase in millage rate, it's the same exact millage rate as last year.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. The ordinance will appear for a second reading in public hearing on October 1, 2019. Continuing, public hearing on tentative fiscal year 2019-2020 tax levy and budget. First reading of ordinance 1483, adopting the fiscal year 2019-2020 annual budget. Finance Director Boswell will explain.
Madam Mayor, council members, if I may, and I don't know if now is the appropriate time, but I have a revised budget that takes out both the 3% of the enterprise zone, so that we will not, it appears that we would not be accepting that final millage rate, or final expenditure or budget amount, and wondered if I could present this either at the beginning or at the end of my reading for this ordinance.
I would suggest you get in on our hands at this time, and then you can go forward with your presentation.
In accordance with the applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes, the first of two public hearings has been scheduled for today, September 17, at 6:00 PM, to solicit public comment on the annual budget for the upcoming 2019-2020 fiscal year. Notice of the public hearing was initially provided to all property owners in the truth and millage notices provided by the property appraiser's office in mid-August. The recommended budget was presented to the city council in a series of budget workshops to review and solicit adjustments to the allocation of the budget documents. The total city fiscal year 2019-20 budget amounts to $70,364,649. The budget summary document is attached, illustrating the total budget for the upcoming fiscal year. The proposed 2019-20 budget reflects the following: No increase in the ad valorem tax rate to 6.555 mils from current year of 6.555. 556,100 in general fund capital programs, $1,622,001 in community investment tax fund expenditures to replace public safety vehicles, equipment, public works vehicles and equipment, and to refurbish public facilities and park facilities. $6,216,600 in utility system improvements and vehicle replacements, and $20,000 in sanitation vehicle replacements and equipment. $986,500 in street sidewalk bicycle trail and drainage improvements, $245,000 in the project plan from the transportation surtax fund. In accordance with the applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes... In accordance with the applicable provisions of the city charter and the Florida statutes, the city council has scheduled today the first of two public hearings on the fiscal year 2019-20 annual budget. After the city council solicits public comment on the proposed annual budget, the council should take action to approve the attached ordinance adopting the proposed budget. The second, and the second hearing and final reading of the ordinance will be held on October 1, 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Boswell. Are there members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, counsel questions? Seeing none, if the clerk would please read title of ordinance 1483.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, adopting the final operating budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, and the capital improvement budget, giving notice to the public hearings thereon, authorizing the city manager to issue such instructions as are necessary to achieve and accomplish the service programs, authorizing the city manager or finance director to transfer monies among the departments and programs within any fund, authorizing the city manager or the finance director upon receipt of a donation or grant to appropriate said funds in the expenditure line, line item of the program as requested by the donor-grantor, providing a severability clause effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with.
Counsel would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 1483 on first reading. Is there a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 1483 at first reading. Make sure I'm reading the right, approved the right one. 1483, adopting the FY 2019-2020 annual budget.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, Councilman Ross.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got some angst over this, and perhaps some of it is my own fault. Let me, let me tell you where I'm stuck with this. I believe it was our second budget meeting, might have been the first one, but I think it was the second one. Again, we were down there, and we were presented with some proposed new street signs, branding. They were, they're blue instead of green. They're nice. They've got the Temple Terrace logo on them, and they look very nice. And they brought a couple in and said, do you like this? And again, everybody was kind of like, yeah, they look really snazzy, but what's that going to cost? I mean, there's a lot of street signs in Temple Terrace. And nobody knew exactly how many there were. Mr. Tinch said, I think there's probably like 50,000. The city manager said, no, we could, we could put one on each intersection instead of two and cut down on the cost. And so I think the number was thrown out. We added up that we did know what the cost per sign was, we just didn't know how many we would, would need. And it was totaled like a quarter of a million dollars. And most of us said, you know, this is really nice, but do we really have a hundred, a quarter of a million dollars to, to do this? That seems like a lot of money. And again, I guess I'm finding out that I wrongfully assumed that that was just scrapped because at none of our subsequent meetings was this ever brought up. And so I, I find out, I get the new book that came out Thursday, I think, and I picked it up yesterday. I mean, every one of these is like 350 pages long, and they, they're different. And so I'm poring through this today, trying to get ready for this meeting, and I find on page 314 of this book that there's $225,000 budgeted over the next five years to replace the street signs in Temple Terrace with blue street signs to kind of rebrand the city so that you'd recognize when you're in Temple Terrace. Well, I mean, I get it. They look nice. I agree. But I ran on a platform of fiscal conservatism. I promised people that if they would vote for me, that I would be a good steward of their money and spend their money frugally and carefully. And I just can't look people who voted for me in the eye and justify spending a quarter of a million dollars of their money to take down a perfectly good green sign to put up a blue sign. That just doesn't sound like something that we have money for. Now, if we have that kind of money, I would much rather see, if we're talking about rebranding, which I'm in favor of, I, I would much rather see us put some kind of entry feature along Fowler Avenue, and you get off the interstate, you pass by something, you know you're in Temple Terrace. I think that would be more bang for the buck. I don't, quite frankly, I don't know if anybody would even notice the blue sign versus the green sign. So again, perhaps this is, is my fault because I, I did go through the old book, one of the previous versions, I don't remember which one, because again, we get a lot of these books. And it was in the old book. So it wasn't, and I don't want to imply that it was slipped in here after we, it wasn't. It was in the book that we had before us when we gave the tentative nod of approval for the budget. So I didn't catch it. It's on page 314 now. I don't know what page it was on then, but it was in there. So it's not a case of anybody trying to be dishonest or anything like that. But if I had caught it, I would have objected then rather than now. But I can't, I, I just can't, I can't support this. And, and I know this is bad. I would have not waited until this meeting to voice this, had I known. But in fairness to us, it wasn't in the executive summaries at any of these meetings either. Every time we'd come in, the front page is a single sheet that summarizes the changes that have been made since our last version of the book, and our attention was never drawn to this. So I guess maybe it's a little bit on me, but not completely on me. I mean, this is a long book. So somebody needs to draw our attention to this stuff. And so I, I can't support this. I can support the budget otherwise. If somebody wants to make a revised motion to take that out of it, I'll be happy to support the remainder of the budget.
I have a question.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, Councilman Donahue.
I have a question, and, and I think you and I might be thinking a little bit alike here.
No.
And never, I was going to write it down, you know. We, we approve this, but then as the spending occurs, we see these and make the final approval sometimes. And that's what bothers me, is, is we actually say, and I, I brought it up last year, it says here that we authorize the finance director and the city manager to move things around. Well, if I've gone to great lengths to say yes or no, to, we'll, we'll just keep up with the city signs, okay, then please tell me that if that expenditure is coming forward, that we at some point can actually say, no, no. We know, we, we know it's in the budget, but no, we, we don't agree with that. Or, I mean, that's what bothers me with this ordinance. It bothers me every year with this ordinance, because as you know, we look, we, we nitpick this thing to death. We can look at little tiny numbers that we say, well, what does this mean? And a lot of them, we don't really know what it means. You know, we have some of these that are small numbers, $20,000. Well, is that one item or five? And unless we, you know, and then of course, you get the eye roll, and somebody's like, how many more questions is she going to ask, for crying out loud? But, so that's my question, and I think it may dovetail into yours. Can we say that at a certain point, or tell me, what is the rule? At a certain point, when we start spending these types of things, I want to have the final word, because I didn't know that the signs were back in here. So when the time comes, you start getting ready to order them, I want to be able to say, yeah, we, we approved that, so go. We had a couple of years ago, we had an issue where we had approved a purchase, and instead there was repair, and we were livid, because that is not what we said. Now, it worked out, everything worked out, it worked out to be a good thing, kept the trucks rolling, whatever. But we all said, well, that was such a good idea, why don't you just bring it to us and let us say, yeah, that's a good idea, repair, instead of replace. So I'm with you, Mr. Ross, but I don't know how to change this tonight. Okay. And I guess my next question is, what happens if we don't do this tonight?
Other comments?
Madam Mayor, I, you know, I, I'll tell you, I, I agree with Mr. Ross. I don't, I don't feel that, I wouldn't spend $250,000 on signs, but that's my opinion. But, you know, just to clarify, only 25,000 for this year, and then it's 50,000 a year for the next four years. But having said that, if the council is not in favor of it, I know we can spend our money, you know, in other areas that probably if we had a priority list, you know, I appreciate what Stash is trying to do, and try to brand and beautify our city, but I think there's other areas we need to beautify. We could start at 56 and Bush, where that Kmart property looks like it's, belongs in a different neighborhood. But we certainly, I would, I would move to approve what sits before us if we can do it that way, minus the sign project. And that $25,000 can be allocated, you know, to something if in fact, we received notice of a, a, of a tipping fee, that's in fact, an act, you know, for real tipping fee, that 25,000 goes towards that tipping fee. So that would be the motion that I would make, because that, that's a true expense, and it can offset some of the setback on an actual expense that's before us.
I appreciate we cannot have, we cannot start another motion unless the person who made the original motion is willing to amend their motion. We cannot entertain a, a, a second, a second motion until the other one is amended.
I think you may have some qualifiers here on what you can do, and how you can do that money.
Well, point, point of order, point of order. Councilman Schillerer was attempting to make a motion. There is a motion on the table. That motion on the table, if the person who made the original motion is willing to amend it, we can amend and continue our discussion. Councilman Chambers.
I have a question about signs.
Well, Mr. Stevenson was ahead of that. I was, I was trying to guess.
Madam Mayor, I'll withdraw the motion so we can continue our discussion.
Thank you. Then we'll go to Mr. Stevenson, and then Mr. Chambers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I can just kind of make a couple points of clarification. This project of street rebranding is underneath the Street Improvement Fund. It is funded from the gas tax. So we're not going to be able to use that money anywhere else. We can certainly make that adjustment if council wishes to take that off the table, or that would be an easy fix. We can fix that and redo the schedule. It wouldn't be that big of a deal. What you're going to end up doing is either doing one of two things, is you're going to increase the fund balance by the $25,000 for next year, or you can reassign that money to something else that is within that fund. But it is a separate fund, but we just can't take that 25 grand and move it.
To sanitation.
Yeah, we can't, I mean, we just can't. That's not appropriate to do. But we can make that adjustment, and, and again, I, I guess, I apologize again, we brought this up, I didn't hear any negative taken out, so we just assumed that it was going to be in. I did, I did go through the exercise of counting every single intersection in town, and it's not, it's not $250,000 worth of, worth of signage. You're probably looking at, you know, we, we have, I've mentioned this to council before, we have taken this city and actually created about 12 different zones within the city. You're probably looking at about $5,000 a zone to do one sign at each intersection within our jurisdiction. So you're probably talking about a $60,000, $75,000 by the town we buy, because again, if we do this, I'd like to do black posts, so on and so forth, so that we, again, identify ourselves separately from Hillsborough County. But if council wishes to take that out, again, that was one of those things that we put in there as something that we were just trying to, again, differentiate ourselves from Hillsborough County, such as Pleasant Terrace area and up around North Fowler, or East Fowler. Counsel's pleasure, I mean, if, if they want to, if you care to, for us to make that adjustment, we can do that. That would not be that big of an exercise for us.
Mr. Chambers.
I was just going to ask a question about the funds, and he clarified it.
Very good. Is there an amendment to the original motion?
Do you restate your emotion?
Was there a motion?
Yeah, we, we wouldn't be having a discussion if there wasn't a motion. There was a motion on, 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 there was a motion in a second.
Andy.
It wasn't me.
No, there was no, Madam Mayor, I don't think there was a motion. I made the motion, I withdrew it.
I made the motion?
You made it, and it was seconded.
We wouldn't be having a discussion if there wasn't a motion.
Well, I, I, then I'm going to rescind that motion for this reason. After all of this discussion, I think, I think the real issue here is, I just wanted to know, and I, I'm sorry if I was confusing in what I said, but I want to know that anything in here is going to come back to us over a certain dollar amount, so that if there are other things, just like you pointed out, and you pointed out, there may be some other things, and we have looked at this thing, but there are many instances when we really don't know what that number means. So.
We are looking for a motion regarding ordinance 1483.
But I'm looking for an answer, so I haven't had an answer to my question.
Maybe, maybe I can answer that question. The ordinance that's in front of you is word for word identical to the ordinance that's been used in the last 15 years that I know.
I understand.
Typically, if we have an approved, and I'm looking at the Street Improvement Fund right now, we've got $25,000 in here for submersible pump replacements. Those are one of those generic things that we put in, in the, in the budget every single year, contemplating, we're going to have a pump go out. But we don't typically bring that back to council, nor has it ever been mandated that we bring that expenditure back to council so that we can go buy a pump. So same thing, I mean, there's a rain tree stormwater project for 135,000 in next year's budget. We would not bring back to council unless it is a resolution approving us to give it to a contractor. You would not see that. But normal purchases, if it's in the budget, we don't bring that back to council, we just, we make that purchase. Okay? Regardless of the amount, I mean, we'll do whatever you guys would like us to do. But again, I don't see the need to do that if in fact, you're approving a budget that's got a line item under a capital project or under the, the general fund budget.
Again, the item before us is 1483. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am, there is.
Okay, thank you.
I would be happy to make a motion to approve ordinance 1483, adopting the fiscal year 2019-2020 annual budget, omitting the street sign rebranding project.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I just wanted to, we have discussion?
Yes, sir. Once we get a second.
Second.
Discussion.
And what do we do with the 25,000 that's allocated? Does it go to the fund, or what?
It stays in the Street Improvement Fund.
Okay, I just, yeah.
Very good. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? The ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on October 1. Public hearing and ad valorem tax levy and budget. Hearing is now closed. Next, item 8E, a public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1471, amending Chapter 2 of the Code, pensions and retirement. The public hearing is now open. Captain Mike Lowell, past chairman of the Police Pension Board, will provide a brief explanation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Captain Mike Lowell, the Police Department, immediate past chair of the pension board. Again, this is second reading of the ordinance, amending our pension plan, extending our current drop program from its current five-year to an eight-year program. The ordinance before you limits this extent, this ordinance extension or the drop extension to three years, and it will sunset three years from the date of passage by this body. The cost associated with this drop increase is negligible, it's $2,260 for the total cost of the plan. So, and the pension board would recommend that council approves that second reading.
Thank you, Captain Lowell. Are there members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, counsel questions? Councilman Donahue.
So, a couple of questions. This nominal fee, is that just paid over time by the fund itself? It just rolls in?
That is the, the total cost to the plan, and as with any actual cost of the plan, it's actually amortized over 30 years, so it's pretty negligible.
Okay, so it's pennies.
Yes.
Okay. So this sounds like a recruiting tool to me, that would be something that I don't think any other agency in the area has a drop program any longer than five years. So was there, you know, I, I'm going to vote to approve this, because I understand the crisis mode we're in, and, and I'm, I'm willing to let this happen. It was the sunset in three years, and we could approve it, we could not approve it, back and forth, that kind of gives me pause. I would like, after we approve this tonight, hopefully we will, I would like for you to go back to the pension we will, I would like for you to go back to the Pension Board, and/or I would direct the Pension Board to look at this and see, this is a great recruiting tool, and it also says to our officers who might be thinking about whether they should go ahead and leave or whatever, that this would be something that would be unique, and for us to make this a permanent. And I know the ordinance gives us that, but next year, as you go back to the board, I, I would really like for us to think about making this a, a permanent thing for our officers, because it has to give them reason to stay, and that maybe isn't there now. So I, I like what you're doing. I like the idea behind it. I understand it, and especially since you're telling me that this cost is really pennies at a time. So, thank you. Thanks for bringing it back.
As Councilwoman Donahue, I'm happy to bring that back to the Pension Board at the next meeting.
And Councilman Donahue, the Pension Board has had extensive discussions around this. This really is a gap opportunity as we're looking at tenured, maintaining our tenured officers to get our new officers trained. An ongoing can create some unintended consequences. You don't want to be so top-heavy that new people say, there's nowhere for me to be promoted. So it was very intentional. There was a lot of discussion around it, and I think everyone feels very good about the three-year period to give us time for our senior officers to train up and have people ready to assume those roles, and there was not a need to extend it. And there are other agencies around the state who, who are doing this and entertaining this. So we are not unique in what we're doing. We're not stepping out on any ledges, but it absolutely is an opportunity for us to maintain the wonderful talent level we have as we're training new officers. Other comments, questions, council? Public hearing is now closed. If the clerk would please read title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending Chapter 2, Administration and Elections, Article 3, Officers and Employees, Division 3, Pensions and Retirement, Subdivision 5, Police Officers of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Temple Terrace, amending Section 2-262 Deferred Retirement Options Program Drop, Providing for Several Ability of Provisions, Providing for Codification, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Here With, and Providing an Effective Date.
Would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1471.
Move to approve ordinance 1471.
We have, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, item 8F, a resolution approving the city's 2020 transportation surtax project plan. Troy Tinch, Public Works Director of Utilities will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Troy Tinch, Public Works Utilities Director. This is the complimentary resolution I spoke about at our last council meeting regarding the surtax. Basically, it's our work plan. It's rather extensive, again, it has several multiple projects in here. We certainly don't anticipate undertaking all these projects over the next year, but what this does do by having a fairly extensive list is it allows us to kind of pick and choose a couple of projects and then push those projects forward. I think the intent is to kind of ease into the surtax, the expenditure of those funds, make sure that we're comfortable with how the process works. So what would happen from this point forward is if the resolution is approved, it would then go to the IOC. The IOC would then review the, the work plan to ensure that it meets the intent of the surtax, the language in the surtax. It would certify it. From that point forward, we would begin constructing defined projects on January 1st of 2020. So with that said, staff recommends the City Council approve the city of Temple Terrace's 2020 transportation surtax project plan. I will stand for questions if any.
Thank you, Mr. Tinch. We do have members of the public who want to comment on this item. Mr. Pagorlik.
Thank you again. David Pagorlik, 15534 North River Hills Drive. And once again, surprise, we have a list of, quote, extensive projects that I know I haven't seen. Maybe you've seen, but I guarantee none of you fully understand the depth and breadth of each of the projects on that list. So my suggestion here tonight is, and you've got time, and this is for the surtax tax that we may, you might not even get, okay, because as we all know, that the legislation just now got involved with that particular taxing element. Have a workshop. Let's set some priorities. You know, we got a bunch of projects there that we're just going to hand over to somebody else that doesn't know anything about Temple Terrace and let them set the priorities? Let's get some, let's get some citizen input as to what they think the priorities ought to be before we just drop a, quote, extensive list on a bunch of strangers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pagorlik. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment to council on this item? Seeing none, I'd ask council questions. Councilman Ross.
Troy, I was, actually stole the words right out of my mouth. I was going to ask you, is there an opportunity, I, I don't have any heartburn with the list, but obviously that's a pretty long list. I mean, we're not going to do all that stuff at the same time, or, I mean, over years that's going to take.
Correct.
Can we, or is it the plan to have a workshop where we can say, okay, let's start with this one, and then we can leverage it by doing this next, and kind of, and will we have that opportunity?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I brought that up during the initial presentation last Friday or the Friday before last, that the intent, because the window for this to happen got crunched down because of the litigation, ongoing litigation. So there were some questions as to if this was even going to move forward. I think there is still some question whether or not that's going to happen. That said, my intent would be that we absolutely have a work session with the members sitting here at the Bay as well as the public, and we ask for input on projects. We unfortunately, we're a little bit behind the eight ball for this particular year because it does have to go in front of the IOC by the end of this month, and then they would review and approve it from that point forward, or not approve, certify it.
But there's my question is, they, they approved the overall list, but that's just the catalog of projects that we get to pick from.
Absolutely.
So we have time then to get the public out here to kind of say, well, I'd like to see this over that, or, you know.
Absolutely.
We'll have, the public will have that opportunity, and we'll have that opportunity?
As a matter of fact, not only will they have that opportunity to do that, we will have that opportunity, but if there is a project that's brought forward during that session, we can have it added to the list. We would need to simply take it to the IOC.
Right.
They would, again, certify that it meets the intent of the surtax, and then it would be added to our list. So that could be done at any time over the next calendar year.
Okay. So I'm correct, and the public should understand it this way, that this is, this is a long list, like a catalog of projects, we just need to get it in there and get it approved.
Yes.
But then there'll be plenty of opportunity for public input to say, okay, from this list.
Absolutely.
The public would like to see this, or this, or this, right?
That's, that is correct.
That's providing a lot more comfort for me than what I.
Yeah, and I, and I, maybe I should have gone to a little more detail.
No, no.
Less, I did mention, so, anyway, but yeah, David is correct. I think the intent would be for even this project, or this project list, project plan, we can still sit down, go through it, identify, hey, there's a couple of projects here that we like, identify maybe a project that's not on the list, and have it added.
Thank you. Councilman Chisler.
Yeah, just to be, just to be clear, this isn't the first time that this has been brought up for the public. I mean, we had a, we had a town hall meeting where this was preliminarily discussed, so it's not, it's not like this is brand new, nobody's ever heard of it. I tend to get confused with, you know, blending in with Hart and their, and their list, but we don't need to get this approved. It just needs to be certified that it falls in the, in the, in the realm, and we have our time to do what we need to, to do the proper due diligence for what we need. Just to clarify that.
Councilman Donahue.
I, I appreciate the fact that you said that if, if a new idea comes forward at one of those workshops, or what could come to us would be Hillsborough County or the City of Tampa coming and saying, hey, we want to go in half with you, and then we could look at it and say, wow, that's a great idea.
Absolutely.
We hadn't thought of it, but now this works. So there is a lot of opportunity here, and I know that you met with the group locally.
Yes.
And talked to them, and they have lots of ideas, and thank goodness you were there because some of their ideas, like, don't fit. But, but, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that, so.
Absolutely.
Are there other questions? If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the proposed 2020 project plan, which will be solely funded by proceeds from the Hillsborough County Surtax for transportation improvements. Is there a motion?
Move to adopt.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye. Aye. Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a resolution approving inner local funding agreement with Hillsborough County. Finance Director Lynn Boswell will explain.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, I bring you great news. We were just approved for a CDBG grant of $312,487. $56,000 of that is going to go to administrative costs. There is a lot of administration that goes into it, and this is, I believe, the second year they finally actually approved us doing that, all of the paperwork, the things that we have to gather for the CDBG grant. And inside of your packet, what we had decided, because they did change that interlocal agreement, to be a little bit more aggressive on making sure that we got it spent this year, is they have a timeline. After speaking with the, with the engineer, we're going to go forward with the map on the sidewalks. We're going to go ahead and see how much that $245,000 can get us sidewalk wise, so we can go ahead and move forward and continue to move forward in these areas for the CDBG. I should probably read the discussion. This agreement is for fiscal year 2018-19. They're always one year behind. I don't quite understand it, but that's okay. It shall commence upon execution by both parties and shall remain in full force and effect until July 1st, 2020. The funding for this project must be expended by June 30th, 2020. Any funds not expended under this agreement must be returned to the county to be reprogrammed into the county CDBG budget. We've never done that. We've made sure we could spend every penny of it. Funds made available through this agreement are utilized to provide benefit to low and moderate income persons, and the following activities are funded in the proposed agreement, sidewalks and sewer improvement. And just to clarify, because we don't have enough of the time for the sewer piece, we're just going to go forward with the sidewalks. In the next application, I am sure we'll be prepared to go ahead and go to the designated area that is in your map right now as part of the application, and we can take care of those areas for sewer infrastructure improvements at that time.
Thank you. Are there members of the public wishing to address council on this item? Seeing none, council questions? Councilman Ross.
Lynn, talk, tell, explain the $56,000 for administration. What, can you provide a little more information or clarification on that, please?
Yes, I definitely can. Every time we get a CDBG grant, and I've been actually doing CDBGs for almost 15 years, both here in this state and other state, and they're exactly the same. They're intensive paper-wise. Not only do you have the receipt, the payroll, all of the federal requirements that are in there, you have to prepare the packet, you've got to get the purchase orders, you have to, I've got to get help from the engineer, making sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing, making sure all the paperwork is in line. That takes time, and it takes time from a lot of us. In the past, it hadn't been provided any kind of administrative paperwork. The quarterly reports and the closeout themselves, the ones that I used to work, work with, actually were about this thick for a very small project.
I don't want to interrupt you, I just, but you're not, that's not what I'm asking.
Oh, I apologize.
So I know you've got a lot of work associated with this. What I want to know is, so the county's backfilling your staff salar, your salary and your staff salary?
They're reimbursing for the work that we are doing on the CDBG on the administrative side.
Okay, so you track your hours that you spend on CDBG, and you send them an invoice and then?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Other questions? If acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve authorizing the execution of an agreement between Hillsborough County and the City of Temple Terrace to fund initiatives under the Community Development Block Grant program in the amount of $312,000, or $312,487. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the interlocal agreement.
Thank you. And we have a second. Any further discussion, council? All in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a resolution approving the execution of a warranty deed with Temple Terrace Apartments LLC. City Attorney Pam Shoshon will explain. Ms. Shoshon.
As everyone is aware, last year, the council had approved the sale of 4.86 acres of property to the Richmond Group. The contract had been entered into last July, and during the course of things, the Richmond Group did assign the contract to a company that they had formed called the Temple Terrace Apartments LLC. Today is closing day, and technically, almost technically, everything occurred. The money has landed in our account, excuse me, in our account. I'm just so excited, I can't talk today. This is sort of just putting a bow on it, and this is to more or less ratify the city manager's signing of the warranty deed that we did FedEx to them. The seller did not require it, but in order to have everything just perfect as far as our records, I'm putting this resolution before council tonight to approve the signing of the warranty deed.
Thank you.
And then we're done and closed.
Thank you, Ms. Shoshon. I'd ask other members of the public who would like to comment on this item. Seeing none, council, any questions? If acceptable, would entertain a motion authorizing the execution of warranty deed with Temple Terrace Apartments LLC for property located in the southeast quadrant of the intersection of Bullard Parkway and 56th Street. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, council? All in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Council business, is there any carryover business from our last meeting, council? Seeing none, new business, and we do have an item 10A, Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club status update, and I believe Jim Music, General Manager of Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club, is here to present a status update on the club activities, membership, and financial condition.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you. My name is Don Whittimore. I'm the president of Temple Terrace. Before Jim gets up to speak, I just kind of wanted to give you a little bit of brief history. I think most of you probably will remember that we were here about 15 months ago, early 2018, when the city and the club entered into a reinstatement agreement in order to get our loan current. That came on the heels of a fairly significant development with Integrity Golf Company, who we had contracted with to take over the management of the club, who promised some capital improvements that never occurred. It left the club quite in the lurch, but we were successful in coming out of that. We raised the money to bring the loan current. We have made all of our quarterly, quarterly loan payments since then. I believe that the council will be very happy to hear that the club is making steady progress. Mr. Music's going to give you a little more detail. It is a long-term effort. Membership has grown slightly, which is very good. Things are going well. We have some long-term challenges. We have some capital improvement needs, just like the city does. Those will be addressed by Mr. Music. But I wanted to get up and give you a little bit of background of where we've been and where we are now and where we're headed. Mr. Music, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whittimore.
Thank you, Mr. Whittimore. If I can, can I, can this? Is this thing, Charles?
If you can bring up the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, council members, thank you all so much for allowing us to come. I, I guess, as Mr. Whittimore alluded to, we didn't know we were missed so much being in front of this council. As my father used to tell me when I was in college, no news is good news. So I was hoping you guys would accept that, but maybe not. Any event, let me kind of, this is kind of a two-fold presentation tonight. One, about the state of the club and where we are and what we've done in the last 16 months. If you'll flip through your chart, we'll go to the first slide. And my philosophy is if you're doing better than last year, and you're doing better than budget, we're making progress. As you can see, our revenues for the first four months of this year, we have a 4% increase over last year, and we're 5% ahead of budget. So things are moving in the positive direction. Something that's mainly attributed to that, we're 21% up in private events compared to last year. So we're getting a lot more weddings, we're getting a lot more bookings with our private events, and a lot of that has to do with a little bit of our capital work that we've done, and I'll explain to you later. Currently, we're 73% booked out. Currently, we're 73% booked out for the budget for this year. In the first four months, we're right now 73% booked out, so we only have 27% left to go to make budget, and we have eight months to do it. It's not going to be a problem, I can assure you, because we're still booking Christmas parties as I speak. With that said, the next slide, which is in concert, our club expenses. We're 21% less than we were last year. So that means we're watching where the money's going, and we're making improvements and we're doing things where we don't jeopardize our services to the membership or to our guests, but we're making smart money decisions. And we're actually 3% less than budget. So that means when our staff got together and we put this budget together, everybody was thoughtful in what they were doing so that we can manage to the number that we're working towards. And I have to admit, it's... We have a great staff at Temple Terrace. There's a great bunch of people there. The next slide is we've expended, and this is spent money, in excess of $180,000 in capital improvements through membership programs and contributions from our membership. As you can see, we've completely redone the dining room and the ballroom. It has new carpet, new paint. We've done a lot of work in there with the facilities and the kitchen. We've installed some new equipment. We have new AC units in the dining room that was a tune of about $20,000. We have new china, new silverware. All these things are major selling factors in the private event business. When a bride comes, or a birthday party comes, or an anniversary comes, and they see a nice clean facility that's well-kept, nice china, nice silverware, it enhances our opportunity to book the business, and it's proven because we're 73% booked out in four months. Our membership, quite proud of this. As you can see, from April of '18 to July of this year, we have a net gain of 89 new members. And that's net. We've actually got about 160 new members, which means I would actually challenge any club in this area that's 10 new members a month. That's pretty good in this industry. And this club, you know, typically you get three members for every one you lose, or three new members for every one you lose. Our club is a little bit different. We... It's two to two and a half to one, and that's a challenge for us. So as I said, we're proud of the fact that we've got 89 new positive members, but in reality, we've really gotten about 160 new members at the club in 16 months. And that takes us to the next slide, and I've heard this from, I guess, social media, and I've heard it from some members in the community, that we're not favorable to the community or to guests. As of the first four months of this year, we've done 4,386 guest rounds. So to say that we're not open to the public is a misnomer. We're not unlike your rec center here in your town, where my wife found out that you have to pay a guest fee there to go play tennis. It's no different at our club. You have to pay a guest fee to come and use the club. So there's some similarities to what our city has to offer between the country club and your recreation center. You can't use the rec center unless you're a member there. Same thing at Temple Terrace unless you pay a guest fee, just like the rec center. So I do want to implement that we are... Or advocate that we are open to the public at the graciousness of our membership, allowing guest play to happen there. So 4,386 rounds. And that brings us to the next topic. Is there any question on the club activities? Anything regarding membership? Any other comments? Okay. Well, that brings us to the elephant in the room. One of the things when I came to this club is I sat down and talked to Doug Hughes, who was the golf course superintendent for 37 years at this club. And I asked him if he could have one thing at this club, what would it be? And it was the new irrigation system. And there are several reasons for that that we're going to go through tonight, but I want to give you a little history of what we're currently experiencing at the club due to the age of the irrigation system. Currently, we are manually watering 12 of the 18 holes at the club, which is ridiculous, to be honest with you. And what that means is the, like, the irrigation control system that you have in your garage that operates your irrigation system in your yard, on 12 holes, that system is not working. So it actually physically takes a person to go and turn that system on. So when you typically water a golf course, you water it at night, when there's nobody there. That's not our luxury. We can only do that on six holes. So the other 12 holes, we have to either disrupt play or find a... A day and time where there's not that much play that we can go actually irrigate those 12 holes, so they're not actually getting as much water as they're required. Currently, we have 46 sprinkler heads that are inoperable. That means those areas are not getting water. That means those heads are capped because of non-replacement parts or irrigation control issues that they just don't operate. So we currently got 46 heads that's not operable. We have over 150,000 lineal feet of hydraulic tubing that runs from the control station out to a head that sends a signal to turn the head on. That tube is now, it's kind of a rubbery material. It's now gotten rotten over the years. It's deteriorating. There's no azubilts at the club, and therefore, we can't find out where it is, so we need 150,000 lineal feet of that. In addition to that, we're experiencing in excess of over 300 leaks a year. That's one a week. That's extensive amount of water that's being actually wasted at this golf course that could be better managed than what we're doing. The initial main supply piping installed, as you can see in the picture, was installed in the 1950s, I think, the mid-1950s. As a matter of fact, Mr. Hughes, the former superintendent, brought me pictures of when this pipe went in in the 50s, and you can see the state. The picture adjacent to the one that... To the slide is actually a hole that was dug about three months ago, and you can see the state of the pipe that's in that hole that just deteriorated over time. Well, you've been on the ground for 70 years old? You're going to deteriorate. Our current automated control system was installed in the 1970s. Actually, I should send this to the Smithsonian, it's so old. This Veritime system is the parts for this system. Toro stopped making them 30 years ago. You can see the second slide over there is a pile of parts that I actually purchased from McDill Air Force Base that had this system, and they found these in a locker when they cleaned out a locker, and the guy brought them over to me, and I paid 100 bucks for his trunkload of this. And we're slowly but surely going through it and finding out if anything works, and we're not having much success. We found a few sprocket valves, a few condensers, but not much. The third slide, I think, is the more appropriate one, and I circled it. As you can see, what's holding this irrigation system together is a pair of vice grips. Those vice grips didn't come from Ace Hardware. They've probably been in there for at least three or four years, holding this particular box up. And this is a prevalent thing throughout the club. And that brings us to where we want to be. The next slide is something that myself and the board and our staff has been working on now for 14 months, and that is a new irrigation system. And it's taken a lot of effort. It's kind of a chicken and the egg. Everything had to come to a head eventually, and you can see the cost of the project is $1.2 million. I've listed out what's funded by the club, and I've also listed out what we're requesting from the city in assistance. But let me give you a little bit of history with some of this. The member funding of $262,000, and I don't know if Mr. Whittimore wants to speak to that, but we had a membership meeting last night, and I'm proud to say that this money has been committed to by the membership. So that money is, I'd say, well in hand. I feel confident that the members that stepped forward for a plan that we have in place will fund this project from their standpoint. The Swift Mud grant, this is where we first started with this 14 months ago. We initially asked for $510,000 from Swift Mud. We were the guinea pig with the management district as far as the golf course receiving funding for a grant. They'd never done it before. We were trying to fit a round peg in a square hole. They couldn't understand it. We couldn't understand their formulas. It went back and forth on a numerous set of meetings, a lot of field tours on the... At the club level. And finally, we came to an agreement to where we could receive $255,000 if we could fit into their criteria, which we did very easily. We negotiated a $100,000 rebate from Toro. That took three months of negotiation with them. It started out at 50. We got them up to 100. One of our board members has been working with the Hillsborough County Historical Society for longer than I started before this club, and he has a $50,000... That's Mr. Mertney. He got a $50,000 grant from the Historical Society. So you can see from this 1.2 million project, the club has now invested $667,000 in this project. The main piping, the $370,000 from Allied Piping is... Goes back to the original piping that was installed in the 1950s. This is the main supply piping that runs throughout the golf course that contributes the water supply to each individual head on the golf course, which the club is paying for, and all the lateral piping, all the control systems, all the weather stations, all the control valves, everything that the club is paying for. We're only asking the city to pay for the main supply water piping, and that's probably a 30- to 40-year life expectancy of that pipe. And the installation of that is 200,000. One of the things that we... When we started talking about this with the... Our Strategic Alliance Committee, or Advisory Committee, one of the questions that came to us is, we know you guys are in a budget funding process right now. Could we push some of this into the next calendar or fiscal year of the city? Two weeks ago, I met with Toro and Mondragon, the installers of this system, and we've been able to do that, to get on their schedule, to start this project in August of next year, in September, and then finish in October, November. So that would push two months of this project out into the next fiscal year of the city. So it's going to put us maybe in a little more Band-Aid and paperclips for the next year, but it's something we'll have to live with in order to get the project done. With that, what convinced us with Swift Mud is we currently are permitted, and with Mr. Stevenson's help, we just received our water use permit. We're permitted to use 255,500 gallons per day to irrigate this golf course. Projected savings that we had to do with Swift Mud in order to get the $255,000 grant is that we had to prove to them that we could save 33%. With some free engineering from Toro and a lot of work by our staff, we proved to them on paper that we could do that. Therefore, we'll be saving 84,000 gallons per day of our aquifer, which I think is a precious commodity to all of us, and it's not something to sneeze at. And as I mentioned earlier, we're experiencing over 300 leaks a year. You can imagine the amount of water that goes out of a six-inch pipe in a 10-hour period if it happens at 7:00 o'clock at night. We don't get there until 6:00 in the morning, and the water runs all night. So... And to mention this, since we are the guinea pigs with Swift Mud, Swift Mud is now out proposing this project to other golf courses in Hillsborough County. So even though we were the first to take on this project, they see the importance of it, and now they're out pursuing other projects for this same reason. Me being new on the block here, I've only been here, as I said, 16 months. There's one slide in your book, I'm sorry, that's not on the slide. I thought about it today. It's a very important date. October 20th, 2019 is when I met with Toro two weeks ago, with all of the conversation going on with tariffs and all the conversation that's going on with potential escalation and material costs, they have came back and told us that they can only fix the material cost until October 20th of this year, which means in terms of percentage, it could be 10 to 15% is what they're projecting. So that's a significant amount of money on this type of project. You're looking at anywhere from 50 to $65,000 that could be a potential escalation if we don't do something by October 20th. Sorry, I didn't make the book. The next slide, as I said, to me, being the new kid on the block, this is... This country club is more than... To this community than just a country club. And the reason I say that is, is because being here, and I've never actually owned my own country club on the East Coast for 16 years, I can't recall too many instances where I closed down the club for community events, maybe once or twice. Here, it's a fact, quite often, and welcoming so, because we get to see a lot of new people that come to our country club that maybe not would have the exposure to it until we have the July 4th fireworks, or until we have the Brew Fest, or until we have the Art and Block Dinner, or, you know, the things that we do, or the craft thing that draws so many people that you guys just got an award for. So the club does supply a lot of community events. We do the King High School Boys and Girls Golf Team at our country club. There's no fee for that. They practice there for free. They use the practice facilities for free. We've now partnered with the help of the chief, the Boys and Girls Club, that we're currently trying to work and start giving lessons to those people. The church across the street, I can't think of the name right off the top of my head, but we're now... We've got those kids. It's, I think, first to eighth grade, I believe. Those kids are coming over once a month, and we're giving those free lessons. So the golf course is more to the community than a private country club. It's not... That's a misnomer. As I said, we've done 4,000 rounds of guest play this year, and we do a lot of things for the community that's not private. This is... My wife and I ride around at night. This is some of the things that we see on the golf course at night. I don't think the gentleman and his wife and his young child in the bunker is actually playing golf. I actually went up and spoke to them, and a very nice couple. They're considering membership, but they're not current members. But I didn't say anything derogatory or mean to them, even though the next day, our crew had to come and fix what they damaged. The other pictures you'll see, which is a reoccurrence, I have two dogs. I see this every day when I go to the golf course, people walking their dog. These people are not members. So in closing, I hope you'll consider our request. I know it's kind of a late thing in the lap, but as I said, this whole thing has been coming to a peak. We didn't actually get funding from Swift Mud until April of this year, is when they approved it, which was a significant chunk of money. We knew, coming to city council and going to our membership, of trying to raise $1.2 million was going to be a mean, heavy task. And with getting this grant money and the Toro rebate, we've... You know, we've actually got 33% of this funded by outside sources, if you look at it that way. And missing this opportunity is... Would be a travesty, to be honest with you. Questions?
Mr. Music, and prior to taking...
Mr. Music, and prior to taking questions from council, we do have at least one person who would like to speak from the public, so I would call up Joe Affronti.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and council. Excuse me. My name is Joe Affronti, and I live at 922 North River Hills Drive. I'm on the Advisory Committee that the council appointed for the club, representing the club and the city. Jim, I can't tell you what a wonderful job he has done, he and his staff, to get our club really moving in the right direction. I think it's evident by the slides that he showed you. You know, just for the benefit of those who don't know, or are watching on TV, as, I mean, you all know, the land and the buildings are owned by the city. The club leases the property from the city. So whatever money is put back into the club is an increased asset to the city, because the club has no assets. So I think it's very important for the people to know that, because you're not investing or just giving us money to improve our club. You're giving money to actually help the city and help us in a partnership, and that's how I like to look at it. It's a partnership. We, you know, the big question that I ask myself, and I ask all of you, is, how important is the course to the city? The course is, to me, extremely important. And if we can't do anything to resolve this issue that we have with irrigation system, we're going to have a weed patch. And I've seen it in different places, and we certainly don't want that here. So if we could work together, as Jim is proposing, to raise the money to get the irrigation system in place, I think you'll see that this course is just going to be absolutely great, and will benefit our city not only financially, but where people could use it as they do now, the fireworks and all the other stuff that we use on our course. So I ask you to please consider giving us the money that we need to make this a great project for all of us, the city and the club. Our guys are very anxious to get moved forward. We're very fortunate that the month of September gives us, we've had a lot of rain in the last several months, so that's helped us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Affronti. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address council on this item? I see Mr. Pagorlik.
Thank you once again. David Pagorlik, 1534 North River Hills Drive. I just wanted to kind of echo some of the things Joe said. I'm also on the SAC Committee, and I would just suggest to you that if the club comes up with their fair share and all the other hard work they've gone through to get the money from Toro and the matching grants, you will likely, as soon as we leave here tonight and tomorrow, hear some negative things from the public about, oh my God, we're doing it again. I think in this particular case, in this particular event, even if you may share some of those sentiments of the public, I think we have to do this. Okay? That irrigation system is horrendous, and it is our asset. It's a city asset. So even if the club goes south, we're going to be stuck with it, and then we're going to pay for the whole thing. So I think even if you have to hold your nose to approve it, if the club comes up with their fair share, I just, again, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but I just don't think that this is something that we can say no to, in spite of the fact that I know that you will be getting some negative pressure from the club because of, you know, things that have happened in the past and some misnomers amongst the public about what the club really means to the city of Temple Terrace. So I just wanted to suggest that to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pagorlik. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address council on this item? Seeing none, I will open up council questions. We'll go to Councilman Ross and then Councilman Chambers.
I have a question for Mr. Music, if you don't mind. You partially read my mind, which is probably a scary, dark place to go, but I was wondering while you were talking if there was any way to do this to where we straddled two fiscal years, and you kind of answered that. And then we got to the October 20th, 2019 slide, and then I got all wrapped up.
Yes, sir.
So how, I'm not stating a position on this, I'm just asking, how could this work with the October 20 thing? What would you propose? That we buy the equipment that we need to buy from Toro and just put it away until August of next year?
Yes, sir.
That's?
That's the intent. We've discussed that with Toro, and in order to save the escalation cost, we would have to commit to it by October 20th. We probably wouldn't get an invoice until 45 days later, which means, you know, December sometime.
But we'd be locked in, though.
But we'd be locked in to the price, and then we, which I've discussed with our superintendent, I've discussed with Mondragon, I've discussed with Toro, we'd either have to find a gracious member that has a huge warehouse, or we'd have to maybe rent some pods, or we'd have to clean out part of our, if you've been to our maintenance facility, we have a lean to that's full of equipment. We've already started cleaning that area up and probably installed some things in there, but there's sensitive stuff, like controllers and things of that, that need to stay in a temperature-controlled environment.
Okay. My other question, Madam Mayor, had more to do with potentially where would we get the money and stuff, but that's not really for Mr. Music. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Chambers.
Thanks. Thank you. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Question on the October 20th date. What do you need from this body to make you comfortable with that date?
Well, I think if you look at the material cost, which I can go back to, will this thing go back to the slide? No? Anyway, I know the numbers. It's the $370,000 for the piping, that's strictly material, and I think that's what we're asking from the city. And then the additional 200 and something thousand from Toro, 299, I think, has to come from us.
Okay, but?
And our grant money.
Okay. So for tonight or before October 20th, are you expecting a positive vote for that amount of money?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay.
That's what I'm requesting. Yes, sir. In order to save the 10% to 15% escalation.
Councilman Schisler.
This is a question from Mrs. Schoen. Did you, what's our legal position as far as being a landowner, a property owner?
I went over the original lease for that on January of 1997, as well as the four amendments to the lease, and the leased premises would, what we've leased to the country club does include the sprinkling system. It's part of what's, what they are getting from us. The only actual mention of the irrigation equipment was that the leased premises included sprinkling and irrigation equipment used in operation of the golf course that was not located on the property. So I'm not quite sure where that irrigation equipment exists, but apparently there's some that is not located on the actual designated property. We've leased that to them as well. There was a paragraph in the original lease dealing with maintenance and repairs. It did not specifically address the irrigation system then. However, in 2015, there was a second amendment to the lease, and the title of that paragraph was changed to include capital improvements. And it states that the capital improvements are those things that enhance the premises' overall value or increase its useful life by five or more years. The examples that were given was the HVAC system or a major component. Pool equipment was mentioned, and replacement of greens, fairways, trees or bunkers, and major golf course equipment. So it gave that as examples, but it was not limited, did not appear to be limited to those things. But if you look at those examples, it would seem that the irrigation equipment is included under capital improvements. It goes on to say that the cost of unbudgeted capital improvements shall be paid as mutually agreed by the city and the country club. So I guess the question that I have, because I didn't have the documents, was when, at the time that the loan was made to the country club of several million dollars to make capital improvements, was the irrigation system included then as an item in the budget to be repaired? So I'm still, so that said, I don't know whether this is a cost of an unbudgeted capital improvement or a budgeted capital improvement. And then again, I would have the question, why would not something as important of this be an item that was budgeted as a capital improvement? So there's nothing that speaks directly to, the country club is solely responsible, we have no liability, but it appears that they are responsible for the leased premises, and this would seem to be, the irrigation system would seem to be included with the leased premises. So the only thing that talks about paying anything was but an unbudgeted capital improvement.
Councilman Chambers.
Follow-up on that. So the sprinkler, the irrigation system goes in the ground, and the club goes away in two years. Does it stay in the ground?
Correct.
And that becomes city property?
Yes.
So we can get an irrigation system on city property for half the cost? That's rhetorical, I'm sorry.
Councilman Downey.
I like where you're going with that. I want to address first the public comment. I think you'll be surprised, there was a lot of chatter the last few days about this on social media and in the grocery store, which is where you hear the rest of it. And I think people are beginning to lean in your favor, and I think a lot of that has to do with what you pointed out, is that it is, people are beginning to recognize that this is, this is part of being in Temple Terrace, that this is, this is part of the flavor, whatever you want. I think conversation appears to be leaning that we're all in agreement that we need to do something. The problem is, what fund do we tap to do that? So I'm in agreement. I want to support you. I want you to be successful, because I want you to continue running the golf course, not us. Okay? I've said that from day one. So it's very comforting to hear that people in the audience agree. I mean, this is all a good sign. This is all going in the right direction. I just need to look at the guy who's in the finance director and say, okay, I do really appreciate all the work that has led up to this. I mean, for you to have a meeting last night and raise $262,000 means that the Arts Council is really going to have a hard time raising the money we need in the next couple of weeks. But that's okay, because this is, this is where we will have said Arts Council Festival, and so these all go together. So I guess I'm going to now, if it's okay with you, Madam Mayor, I would lean to the, somebody who could tell us. I love the idea of being able to split it up. I do have a question. This sales tax?
Yes, ma'am.
If we make the purchase, does that go away, or is that also on?
Thank you.
Other items?
Thank you, council. Thank you. One of the, one of the items that was highlighted in there that I kind of run over real quick, the $18,000 sales tax is only on the Toro portion that I thought we were going to buy. If there's some way that we can work with the city to reimburse you for the Toro, that $18,000 could certainly be put to better use, because the club certainly pays enough tax already in sales tax. So that's another $18,000 that could come off of this number if the city would purchase the Toro and let us reimburse you.
Other comments, questions, council? Councilman Schiller.
I do have a couple of questions. First of all, Mr. Music, I want to say what a pleasure it is having you operate this facility, because there was some panic here a couple of years back when it went down. Although I've only met with you a couple of times, you're very respectful and very professional, and you know what you're doing.
Thank you.
You know, having said that, I, as many of you guys probably have, I was actually giving a tour of some of these irrigation system, and it is, and, I mean, it's pretty bad. It's not, it's not a question of, you know, is it good or bad? It's bad. Couple of questions that I had, and I'm just trying to think out loud. We actually, you know, the golf course is, is an asset to the city. Whether you support the club or not, it's an asset. If you take that golf course out, property values will be different in Temple Terrace, there's no question about that.
Yes, sir.
And that certainly has some value associated with it as well. I know in the past years that, I was actually here when we revamped the loan for the country club, and the city had financed it at a much lower rate, and you guys were able to build the maintenance barn out of split-faced tuck instead of a metal building.
Yes, sir.
And that was a $75,000 expense that the neighbors were panicked over, and that was sort of a win-win.
You mentioned that to me, yes, sir.
So I think the city has always tried to, to work with the club, the golf course. A couple of questions I have, and I know the country club, the golf course, is currently repaying back the loan that the city is liable for, 150,000 or something in that direction a year. A little money a while back was not paid, and it was put on the back of the loan. So nothing was forgiven, if I'm correct on that.
That's correct, yes, sir. And we are current.
Yes, sir. You made that statement earlier. Is there, I know years passed, there used to be a lease payment, like a percentage of the beverages. Is that still taking place, or is that, is that sort of, did that go away? It was like, I'm thinking like a $20,000 number. I know in the past years, there was a percentage of beverages that was paid to the city as a lease.
Yes, sir.
So I, do you know that?
To my knowledge, Councilman, no, sir. That was kind of a renegotiated, I think, I'm not sure whether Integrity did it. Mr. Whittemore may be able to speak better than that to me. That was before my time. But being here last year, I know that the $31,000 a month encompasses everything.
I got it. I understand you answered that question. The other question is, and I don't know what category it falls into, but the way your organization has gone out and, outside the box to try to make, put your arms around this and cover the financial obligations, expenses associated with that, is there a mechanism that the city could possibly pursue or utilize where our lobbyists could secure any funding for a facility as we've done in the past? That's a question I have.
Yes, sir.
That certainly could help to some degree.
Yes, sir.
There's the historical aspect, there's, you know, many different aspects that it could be titled or articulated, or however you want to do it. If they could fit it within those parameters, I don't know if there's any discussion with Mr. Betts or not, if there's anything that he may- Mr. Betts or not, if there's anything that he may know of, because he's pretty well-versed on this funding. I'm just trying to look at ways to try to assist.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Because obviously, we're not plush for money. You saw us fighting over with our sanitation director over there about his tipage fee. So it's not like we're trying to squeeze you.
I know Mr. Finch, I've spoken with him, and I really felt bad for him, and I really felt bad for me coming after him.
So, you know, just, just trying to talk out loud to see if there's a way to get to a point that can certainly help accommodate the project before us.
Yes, sir.
So I guess, you know, that question, I know you may not have the answer, Mr. Stevenson, right now, but that's something that I would like to know if there is a, I know you say you're limited on your timing, I get that, but prior to now, I didn't have an exact number. I didn't know where we were. So I, I think that would be very helpful. I mean, I know, we can give you $18,000 right off the bat, because we can certainly change who's paying for what.
Yes, sir.
And that's 18 grand off, but that's a very small portion of it. You know, instead of paying for some of this, we could just pay for the cost, and that can easily go away. I'm sure that's probably why we're paying for the piping at some point, because you're saving on the allied piping costs. We're probably saving the sales tax on that.
Yes, sir, you are. That 18,000 does not include sales tax on that. It was...
But if there's anything else associated with it, like if the city was to consider any of the installation costs, then that could be swapped out with some of the Toro costs or something. That's where I'm going.
Right.
So, I mean, things can be worked a little bit, but I, you know, can't speak as to if there is funding, where's it going to come from? But is there also an opportunity to get it from, you know, from our lobbyists and see if there's an opportunity there?
Yes, sir.
And if I could, Councilman Chalera, and thank you for thinking out loud, because I think one of the very exciting opportunities for us is our governor's number-one priority is water. And when we look around the state of Florida and we look at a very creative, very creative, and thank you, Jim, for what you've done, a very creative private-public partnership with Swift Mud, which does not always have the reputation of partnering. So I believe your country club leadership has obviously done yeoman's work, that they're excited about enough, they're taking to others. But as the lead, as the lead entity, knowing how important our water resources are, thank you, Councilman Chalera, for bringing this up. I think there really is an opportunity for Temple Terrace to, to be a flagship and a real champion. If we can get Lou Betts to, to approach, and we can absolutely reach out and use this with your permission, it would be a wonderful opportunity to bring our, our state representative and our state senator out to say, we are doing something significant and substantial and very intentional to save our most precious resource while at the same time honoring the history and honoring our community. I think there's a wonderful opportunity, Councilman Chalera, for us to go after funds under the premise that we are saving water resources.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
And, Madam Mayor, I know some stuff I've learned here recently, there is ag programs out, out there when you are conserving water. I have a little farm out in Plain City, and I dug a pond out there, and the ag folks came out and said, we would have paid for that, and we'll pay for a well, too, if you do it solar. So there, there might be some opportunities out there that we're not aware of. I certainly wasn't. I would have more than happily taken, you know, an ag department's money to pay for something that I had to pay for out of my pocket.
Certainly.
So I, I think that there is some, certainly some, some, there may be some opportunities out there. I can't say for sure, but I think if Mr. Stevenson reaches out and we reach out to some folks in the, the ag industry, and I can put you in touch with the people I dealt with that might be able to say, yes, there is, or no, there's not.
Yes, sir. Be glad to do it. We pursue anything that's got money.
I just have a question about that. Or is your, is your idea, because we're under such a time crunch, is your idea for us to commit and then to try and recoup our investment? I mean, I, I love the idea of getting the state or ag or whoever else to chip in. I just don't know that we, I mean, today is the 17th of September, and we have until the 20th of October. So, and the session, legislature's not in session. So, I mean, is that what your idea is, like, go ahead and commit and then try and recoup the money? Because that, that would seem to me like the only way we could take advantage of these would be to say that we have done this, and like you say, now we're coming to the governor saying, because this is so important, you know, we had to tap into our own, whatever. I love the idea, I just don't know if we have the time to go that avenue.
Quite frankly, with all, you know, with the responsibility and obligations that we have, I know that there is a time crunch, but I would feel much more comfortable having this discussion at our next meeting. And I would like to know a couple of things. If the city was to consider anything, where would the money come from?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? But also to look at if there's other sources of funding, if there's an opportunity there, whether it be through our lobbyists, or whether it be through an ag industry, organization, whatever. You know, I get we have to hustle. I'm not saying, you know, just drag our feet and decide, but I, I think it's, it's our obligation, our duty to, you know, overturn every rock before we say, okay, there are no more rocks.
Right.
What do we do?
Right.
And I, I get you're on a time, so...
Yes, sir.
It's not, you know...
Sorry for the late, but like I said, this all came like this with Swift Mud, and it's, it's...
You've been through a lot of work. I mean, I certainly...
Well, if you had come to us before, you wouldn't have the $262,000.
No, ma'am, I would not.
So, kudos.
No, ma'am. Nor the 100,000 from Toro.
Mr. Stevenson, did you have something to share?
Nobody knows where you can get $25,000.
You got eighteen, you got twenty-five, we're up to forty-three. Let's keep going.
We're going the right direction.
We're on the right way.
We're working on it.
Yeah, exactly. Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, if I, I guess, I think we need to do a little bit of homework here. I think that now that, and again, from what I'm hearing, unless this is different than what I'm hearing...
No, I think you're hearing it.
You want us to move forward looking at some options and pursuing some additional monies. If, if you would so desire that Mr. Music and I get together and try to crunch some numbers here, I don't know that, I don't know that buying the pipe from the city's perspective would be a bad idea. I think that would be a rather good investment. We've never had a conversation about paying for labor, which is one of those things that we would have to maybe juggle some numbers, but counsel, I mean, I need to have some time to work with finance and see if we can find this money, and work on schedules. So, you know, certainly if we can split this within two fiscal years, I think I'll remind you, we did that with the, with the Rec Center. It worked out rather well, and it had just had to do with coordinating construction schedules with, with the contractor. So, you know, if, if I'm hearing correctly, council would like for city to pursue this. Let me have a couple of weeks, and we'll kind of come up with some ideas and make some phone calls, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. And just to protect everyone on the dais and ensure communication is clear, I would entertain a motion to move forward looking for funding options and directing Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Music to consider looking at funding options. Is there said motion? We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so very much, Mr. Whittemore and Mr. Music, and those who, those who spoke out in favor of this.
And I will mention, I am a member of the Rec Center now, so...
Thank you very much. It is now time for city manager's report. City Manager Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just really briefly, our senior fair was last Friday, and kudos to Leisure Services for putting that together. There was a lot of people there. I think probably the biggest one that I've seen so far. It was well done, and certainly make sure your staff knows that we appreciate their efforts, because I know they put a lot of work into it. Next, next meeting just happened this fall on the same day of National Night Out. We're going to try to keep a light schedule for council that night so that we can all enjoy the evening with National Night Out. And I don't know, Chief Ushley, you want to, you want to say something about National Night Out? I'll, I'll let him, this is kind of his event. We'll let him...
Well, thank you, Mr. Stevenson, and Mayor and City Council. You know about National Night Out. It's an opportunity for us to come together as a community once every year to come out and show support for protecting our neighborhoods. That's what it's all about. We encourage our residents to turn their lights on and to come out and spend some time with one another, getting to know one another and having a good time. It's going to be at Mission Hill Church this year. We have a lot of parking, and they've been very gracious in offering us their facilities, so we're looking forward to a great time. And just hopefully you can, you can wrap up your, your council meeting and get out there, but we will have ample parking for you, so there's no worries there. Mission Hill Church, yes, sir. 10002 56th Street.
Fifty-sixth Street.
So come on out. Thank you.
One other thing to add, Mayor. Just mentioned, I know that Mr. Langfeldt and Mr. Oberling was working on this for a long time. There's a groundbreaking for buddy baseball, and those efforts have been going on for years. This Friday at 9:00 a.m., we would enjoy, if everybody would join us out there. It's a wonderful program that they've been working on for some time. So if you would, put that on your calendar. It's a well-worth cause, and we certainly would like to have everybody join us. We've made invitation, invitation... Invitations to some of those in the, the county as well that have been instrumental in helping us put this together. So hopefully we'll see you then, and that's all I've got.
Is there any other business to come before counsel this evening? Seeing none, meeting is adjourned.